...
I was down in the trenches.
There's somebody in there.
I already know where it is. I was. I was. I lived around like two-ten, down like one-seventy-eight.
John Ross?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm overpaying because you see that on the side.
I would think I had. So, I'd be a good grandma. Great kids always ask me to give a room.
I don't get that.
I don't care.
We have a brief list of work.
Good job. I had to give a...
Hey, how do you use that?
For, uh, early days. You got my security on it. Do you like that?
Yeah. I can't resist where I'm at.
Um, my...
It's not letting me into the...
I believe it's their best time they have.
In an hour.
Well, you should have my...
Right.
Yeah. And he gave you... I brought you a present.
What'd you mention?
That's a... Maybe this house has...
Now, we consider a line.
That's because you have... Anybody?
Yeah, really.
Somebody has something on you.
But... Who's here? Yeah.
Uh, I was... I was counting, sure, basically he was coming and then he said probably not because of... Uh, I'll call him right here. Call his cell.
All of them are... I'm chairman. At the library.
He called everybody's coming, so I assumed... And then Bruce. Jake and Warren, sir, some of my last part. I see now. I know.
Now, if I'm disabled, I hope one is...
Isaac wasn't in the first place. He's on my email saying we have meeting. Uh, we did. The first thing we did, uh, Stern, Sable, Plansbauer, Hertzel, so, oh, we would take Jake for everything. It is, okay, so we should have five. And I asked Ellie to listen. Thank you. Thank you. Got it, that's right. So, the last... I got three of them. She's not like a three-hundred buck back. Smart. Smart.
Sure. If you're a side, you're a curvy holder, right?
Yeah.
So, they would all, it would be... Yeah. West side, maybe, is what's... On the south, which is the side of both sides of the road. They're set back on both sides. Do you send it too much? I don't think it's... Do you remember that?
He said, "No, no, 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 no."
He's on the way, stopping traffic. Yes, here's on the other piece of land.
Oh, okay.
Dave, oh, I'm... You guys stay here with the sign?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
There are... That was...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, only the... The latest comes on the website.
I believe you can say...
It looks like you're...
Almost in front of the finish.
Yeah. And she didn't get that. Oh, no, she did say. I didn't get either of these. But the latest version of the resolution that she sent me after it was... That changed in the resolution, it's on the website. I agree. Yeah, she presented it correctly to me after she placed the changes. No, it's not your fault. Maryam, happy birthday.
Thank you. I'm so do, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, now we...
It's actually online. That's why it's hard to... All the...
Diane. How are you doing? Can I release your...
Yes. So, I even have what the word, this is what I... That's generally what it means, doesn't it? Explains things, but we can't stop them from making applications, even though it's a... I, I got twenty other things to go with. Alright, so one more. That's right, that in one. They're here from the record, and I'm telling you, I told you one minute.
Yeah, I'm here up here. This is the laptop that I don't want to... The lawyer from... Oh, I turned on now, so...
Well, if you want to see, I think that would be computers. That would be easier for us.
What do you need to do that? And you can just put on your own chair, stable, as well as...
You, you have these resolutions. I have a chance.
Yes. The ones... Uh, very great, all the way to...
What about you?
Okay. Then, uh, we... Please rest with the flag.
The Republican Party says, "Undergoverned, reasonable, liberty and justice for all."
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asper Park Press and our letter and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the town was laid out at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has right to attend this meeting and reasonable confidence that this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, welcome.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Plansbauer. Mr. Hertzel. Mr. Brenner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer. Mr. Radesick. Mr. Quinckles. Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, sorry, in procedural peace. You brought me, sir, her testimony, your proof of the truth, all true, and not a question. Yes. Okay, I'm, I'm just cheering until the chairman shows up and then I can switch on the process. Um, so, the resolution.
Chairman, if I may, before beginning, I'd like to introduce Alexandra Kerhart. She is a attorney in our office. She just finished her courtship with Judge Hopson, and she's going to be helping our defense department. Earlier tonight, we have a, we're going to try something new tonight, we're going to do conditions on a draft resolution by...
Please trust the table, then.
So, anyway, thank you for your indulgence, I'd like to welcome House.
I think you jumped the ever.
I mean, the first resolution we have up is S.D. twenty-four seventy-seven for Hennos Satora. Board of Plansbauer's at the last meeting and wanted more time, I believe, to review the exhibit prepared by Mr. Flannery with some of the roadway realignments they have, you had requested. Um, I'll let Mr. Flannery go into that for the approval. I don't believe Mr. Stern was here when that application was acted on, so I don't think he can act on that resolution.
If you haven't, remember we just showed up.
Let's try to reflect what Mr. Meyer has said.
Would you like to show us, Flannery, the... If you want to, Flannery, please.
Fire, you've heard from testimony of people that support the truth, the whole truth, and not a question.
I did, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, I had sent exhibits, uh, and I have a copy of them here to all the board members.
I believe Mr. Stern was the only one.
That's right. So, uh, the, there were comments on getting the, um, recreation areas topless. One at the clubhouse and, and an additional one, uh, we had indicated this spot was going to be. On the two exhibits, we have option A and option B, we moved it a little further away from the Shiva. Uh, and, and we prefer option B, which is the purpose, because the Shiva is three blocks away. Uh, the, uh, it was indicated to provide a road to connect to, uh, the shul, so that people didn't have to come out onto Massachusetts Avenue to get to the shul. We've done that with an alley, which is our, a two-way alley, which is RSIS compliant. Uh, and it's similar to what was done on the Oak Street Core. I have a, a plan down there on the Oak Street Core, where we have, uh, two streets that are connected by an alley. It provides eighteen feet of pavement, uh, and if the board feels we need something wider, we, we can make the pavement wider. The idea is to provide the vehicular access. How wide did you make it? Well, we made it eighteen, which is RSIS compliant. Uh, and, and the basis for that is normally it's a thirty-foot road, we're parking on both sides. Very true. Well, in late, it was thirty-two, we always exceed the RSIS. But e- even the thirty-two with paving on each side. But, but we, we can make it twenty feet, we can make it twenty-four feet of pavement. Uh, when you make it too wide, then people are parked there. Uh, so, my recommendation would be twenty feet of pavement, um, and with no parking signs, obviously. So, a typical street that has thirty-two feet, how, how many feet are in the actual... Well, you, you would figure, you would figure seven feet for the car on each side. Uh, so, fourteen from the thirty-two, uh, brings you down to... And the rest of it is silent? What do you... Just, no, in thirty-two foot pavements, you have parking on both sides. So, you're taking fourteen feet away from the thirty-two.
I think your question... I didn't ask a question. Curve to curb, the thirty-two?
Yes. Curve to curb, thirty-two, and you're cutting it down to... Eighteen.
With no, with no parking.
With no... And that's basically taking six feet off each side. Yeah, you feel like it's eighteen feet wide and still will park? Yes. Uh, and we, we, we don't have a lot of, uh, experience yet with the Oak Street area where it was done.
Uh, it's bad.
The streets are very, very narrow. If you can't do, there's no, we can't have traffic, park cars, and people drive, it doesn't work. Well, and, and that's why if we make these bigger, cars will definitely... If we make it eighteen feet, the only people that we're thinking are using this, the intent of it was for the people to get to shul and then get back from shul. So, the people that are going to get hurt are the people in the neighborhood. This was never intended as a circulatory road that the people from the undeveloped area are, are going to be sliding. I was actually thinking of it as a circulatory road. And, and not, I mean, to keep, to keep whatever grid we still have, not closing all streets and making cul-de-sacs and bulbs in the middle. How much more feet could you get if, let's say, you squeeze the lines down? Well, um, i- i- if we, we go with an additional four feet of pavement, we don't lose lots. In order to get any more than that, we're going to be losing lots. One lot, one house? Two of them. Entirely what? Uh, we're, we're going to be taking, uh, a half duplex off each one. In order to put a whole roadway, a fifty-foot parkway, we would lose two duplexes for you. As a time resolution, I believe we had attempted to do a full roadway so we can keep the grid, keep traffic. I think having a regular roadway going into a narrower, just to increase tra- increase traffic, keep traffic backed up from both sides going in. That was my intent on the motion, and I think that's what you want to go. That was how I did it, I did to get a regular street. I mean, I, I wouldn't personally even want to give you more of a variance, I don't know if you would feel it. Uh, a rate of variance on side or setax to be able to squeeze, squeeze down. Well, why, why don't, uh, we carry this to another meeting? We'll do a plan on, uh, what kind of variance would we need in order to make it wider. Uh, and, and you're looking for thirty-six feet of pavement? Whatever typically... Thirty, thirty-two feet of pavement? Whatever, no standard, whatever, and that's what, whatever your best is, we talk. What are they? Uh, thirty, thirty-two is the, is the... He's an assistant. I will talk to her. My, my reaction to that is that the discussions that we had were specific to getting the traffic to the shul and back. Uh, and that this applicant i- is already putting in a part of the internal loop that he, that he wasn't required to do. Uh, and, and to, and on top of that, have him provide another one. And, and if I was one of the people buying one of those houses, I, I really wouldn't be happy with the fact that now we're making, kind of encouraging, uh, people to drive through there. So, I mean, that's, that's... I handled it, not the abortion. The, the problem is, you know, the, the traffic and the intensity of the traffic that's coming from, from, from all the developments. And we understand that this is a wireaded application that you presented, so we went along with it. But now, if we can have another eager-senior, eager-risk vocation for this big development and the future development that's going to be built behind it. It, it should be open, we should open it up as much as possible. And minimize traffic on cross street. Well, this, this isn't, uh, minimize traffic on cross street. This is just, uh, have, have people come to that intersection. The, the internal... Massachusetts is, uh, I'm gonna cross it. If it's twenty percent of cars more, if, if cars less on cross streets. So, so, I, I'm hearing the input. Uh... I see you're ready. The resolution's ready. We have a full roadway. Yeah. We have to adjust the roadway.
We have to bring that. This is the plan, I'm on the division, what we heard, we have to listen and submit. So, we understand your input. We can't just start slashing parts, we gotta go back, design, bring it back, show it to you.
I'll tell you. We've done our worst deal.
If additional relief is required, they'll have to provide new notice to the public.
Okay. Fine, I, I do it eventually. Okay, so, we have motion to table, do you need a motion to table, or just...
No, we'll just table.
Okay. Um, we just... You can hold your chair? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, the next resolution that we have on for tonight is S.P. twenty-four thirteen for Kikar Shavis. I believe Mr. Plansbauer was not here, but that was approved, so he can't do that. Yeah, I don't know why, I, I said that, I don't know why I can't hear that, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, yeah, yes. Mr. Iverson. Thank you.
All right, and, um, do you review resolutions?
Um, the latest version is available on our website. Some changes were made this afternoon for discussion with some of the board members.
Okay. Are you happy with current, uh, comments?
As the chairman, so, as the chairman, I just reviewed it just now, I just said in the last hour, there's some changes need, um, to it. I'm following the last version, it's on, on record, allow. I can, I'm just asking, we should, changes being made that are circulated at time, both to the board committee, but also for, for the applicant and their attorney. I just, I was even, then...
I'm listening.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I was just, in the last hour, there's a change. I just reviewed it, I didn't know how to read it.
And the last would be, come from again, to the changes, discuss it again, and then come back next time. Because we'll all want to hear it.
I understand. I'm not knocking you, but...
Is there a motion to, to move on with the resolution? We're, we're just, I love it.
We're, uh, you know, we're, we're doing our best to try to circulate and make the changes and make everyone like Mrs. Soperstein happy.
On the record.
So, oh, there, there were, after the last, the changes that you would reduce.
I just, I just spread it down, we told him to stop.
And also, Mrs. Soperstein wanted to, uh, present a number of terms, if I had them heard. I think I covered that. Um, she also asked me about whether, uh, notice would be required, right, it's probable. That in the resolution, I explained to her about that we don't have any control once we get up. If somebody gets into front, suit, or, or whatever notice is not required, then any able to do that, we can't, we can't take case, uh, for future problems, but, but I did put it in the resolution. So, hopefully, everyone's happy.
Oh, is there a motion?
Yes, I can.
Is your second motion, plus?
A second.
Okay. Your favor, or is it...
I'll do a roll call. Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Plansbauer. Mr. Hertzel, do you want to vote on the resolution? Mr. Brenner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you own the... Yeah, short lived.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Hertzel had a right, chairman, excuse me. The next, the next resolution is S.P. twenty-four nineteen for Hennos DeBora. I have again, marked that Mr. Plansbauer wasn't here, is that also an approval?
I don't approve.
Oh, I...
I have, I have you not here for the next, the next several, I think you missed two meetings. That might be correct.
We told you, come to...
He does, he does.
I understand.
Thank you.
Um, the, the resolution reflects, I have this one running poll.
Yes, that revision was made.
I'll make a motion to...
I definitely...
You added that side book?
This is what's in the resolution, that the board approval is one bankable. For a non-circulation, took it uncounted, only one law. If the applicant desires to create an additional banking space, board approval must be obtained. So, Mr. Sable had another question?
Yeah, with the sidewalks.
Sidewalks, um, makes...
And then Mr. Fetterer and...
Mr. Sable raised one issue regarding the applicant, we had sidewalks on one side of the property. I believe it was the word, it wasn't in the resolution, we have no objection, we agreed to having that, um, the resolution.
So, I also, I want, I want to explain why we're insisting on having one running poll here. The, the UPO did not discuss running poll, and if you let it come as an accessory use to a school. And even though it's, it's more harsh, the parking requirement than the most, um, aggressive, um, parking requirements for any, any zone, um, any use. Still, when we approved it, we approved it based on what we know, how many people come to a wedding in length. It's not based on anything that's in the UPO, it's based on how many people use, uh, reality. Right. So, that's why we're insisting, um, and I think for the future, I think you might be, like, to... There'd be some certain development, you know, fundamentals. It's not universal, I think. Without the... Okay, Mr. Jeff, I'm adding on the English.
About what? I'm, I'm trying to understand, who wants to... I, I, I don't, I'm not sure, Adam, what exactly do you want? I, I have several places where we have the word sidewalk comes up, uh, seven times. Um, and... Oak Street is unapproved, the sidewalk is proposed along Oak Street, and the side, sidewalk is proposed along the portion of... Applying private frontages, I call all local member evidence. Mr. Flannery reaffirm said one change was made, further confirmed the applicant's right to sidewalk, so on all frontages, the applicant will still curb the sidewalk. And then applicant shall provide additional sidewalk near the entrance of the proposed building to the satisfaction of the tenant here. So, opposite side. The roadway.
So, the applicant, because the rest is not shown on this, I don't have to, I don't have to side the... I just wanted to... So, it's the opposite side of the... So, I'll, I'll leave, and I... It's the road, it's the road. Hit one, now, here. Here, 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 on here. Western, western. West side of the public, western.
We do have that, and all branches, um, but I don't know.
It's the opposite side of the street.
But he's talking about on your side of the street, any other side of the street.
Cause they own the...
The applicant... Shall provide sidewalks on both sides of the street.
I don't even know the name of that street, who knows?
Cold Hill. Opposite the bank with all, uh, uh, opposite the bank with all.
Terry, are you, are you clear with what you're saying, which we're going to...
From a PM first major. Fourth, and then she cleared... I think I would say that her, her recollection, it is consistent.
The resolution said that they install sidewalk on their frontages, they are offering, they are agreeing to also install along existing frontage that is not theirs and does not have sidewalk.
I'm not, I'm not, according, across the street is also the same applicant's property. Even though the building is there, across the street, you agree to put the sidewalk in on that side as well. Only, that's why...
Yeah, Mr. Brenner sent along all your frontages, so that'd be included, isn't that right?
I think this is what I'm clarifying, that's normally across the street, but the building is not ours, that's what the, the issue is, but again, we have no objection, just an obligation.
All right, I add that in.
Do you want, do you want, also, this?
Okay.
So, um... Uh, Mr. Jackson, we're having...
The applicant shall provide sidewalks on both sides of the street, opposite the bank with all, and sidewalk from right to left, so, and from the whole street. That will be opposite.
You're saying along the, the applicant's property?
All the, the full length of the applicant's property.
Thank you very much. We decided to... So, based on that addition, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Mr. Sable moves, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, I...
No, I just did that just to better... Just for the...
Okay.
Um, S.P. twenty-four twenty-eight, made by Almond Village Homers Association, it's a site mine for synagogue, I believe again, Mr. Plansbauer, Mr. Meyer, when I hear that, you can...
Okay, do we have a motion now? I'll look. Can you motion, a second, all in favor, aye?
S.P. twenty-four fourteen for Casanova, mixed-use building on River Avenue, um, saying, why do we, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Plansbauer?
Isn't this the one with the, uh, frosted windows?
Yes.
We got that in the, uh... I'm looking at you, huh?
Is the resolution there?
Is this the one?
Isn't this the one with the, the refrigerator truck in the back?
No.
No, that's.
I'm sorry.
Which one? You have two applications, uh. Oh, okay, 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 yeah.
Next.
Right addition, we have a motion, a second, I would move them second.
All in favor? Aye.
Number six.
Then, last one, is SP 2486, made by OCY590, minor subject freelance.
I'll move it. Move, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Meyer, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll add, he asked before, then he changed to the. And we announced it, number four and five?
We did not announce them, so, yes.
Okay, one, two, three, abstain, right?
Correct, we have two applications on tonight, that have some, uh, technical differences with their resolution, with their notices. Uh, both are being carried to October fifth, both are providing new notice, um, however, SP 2432AA did provide accurate notice in the newspaper, so they requested that we announce a carry for that application to the October fifth, so they don't have to republish in the paper.
But say you.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
No problem. Um, if, with the board's consent, we can make the announcement that SP 2432AA is being carried to October fifth. Sure. And it's the publicly advised application, SP 2432AA, made by Mordecai Salpur, is being tabled tonight, and will be heard instead on October fifth, twenty twenty one, six p.m., this meeting hall, no further notice to be provided.
Okay, um, number one, now, number one, it's a rehearing, who can move this?
SP 2470 is a reconsideration of an application that were occurred recently and denied, the resolution has not yet adopted, and the applicant will present new information for the board for the reconsideration. Present at the last meeting where I was denied was Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough, and Mr. Meyer. I believe since then, Mr. Hertzil, Mr. Isaacson have watched the recording, um, so that six of you tonight are eligible to vote on the application.
We both said on the last meeting on this.
He said on the last meeting, I watched the recording for the.
I watched it, but you said something. So, this, this is the third meeting on this.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Hertzil, if I may briefly, um, I think it was Mr. Isaacson asking for information about this particular procedure. Uh, what the applicant can say is due to mistake and emergence, uh, in the law or procedure et cetera, that the board can reconsider, it's kind of a pure, uh, procedure that's available under the MLO. The board can reject it outright, you can listen to what they have to say, you can change.
It not rejected, it, it was rejected.
We're not saying you can reject the reconsideration, so you can say, I'll reconsider it, and then after reconsidering, say, I'm staying with my original. So, according to the sake, there's not enough of an issue where we have to, here, even if you have to say.
Okay, so we are listening, we all know last.
But I would recommend, in unusual circumstances, that the applicant be given some broad latitude, because of the format COVID that we are under. I recall that Mr. Keshub was there, um, and I believe he was trying to communicate with his client, there were election storms that night, if I remember, communications were in and out, and he kind of just faded out. So, while, what I think Mr. Keshub was pointing at, was aggressively respond, if I had been able to communicate with my client, I would have been able to provide to the board that the fire right application would be worse in the neighborhood, and then if you put a turnaround, I think he wants to further clarify that now. So, without taking your side, that's my role.
Yeah, I would like to ask Terry if you have any comments. I know that you've gone a little from traffic and safety.
There's been turn, there's been back and forth with some of the township staff as to if this application went through, what kind of turnaround, for lack of a better term, would be best here. We solicited input from the traffic safety bureau, uh, who we deal with on all, all the capital work, in town, all the road work, um, they've got the best institutional knowledge of local traffic additions, frankly. We sent a request as to, they consider a turnaround, which is a K-turn shape, uh, which is not limited by R S I S in terms of size. They have enough room to put in that, would be designed turnaround as part of this current concept. Mr. Keshub, a few months ago, if I could, you had done a turnaround concept, I believe, a few months ago.
Correct, so we had submitted both a hammerhead style turnaround, as well as a reduced size cul-de-sac to the board.
Thank you, now, there, there were also concerns expressed that some of the local residents favored a cul-de-sac turnaround, a circular bolt, as opposed to the K-turn, the turnaround. The problem with the bolt is that per R S I S standards, you need, you need an eighty, what is it, Joe, it's forty eight foot radius, including the eight foot right away.
Correct.
And you have, I think, twenty nine and a half, which is less than two thirds of the state design standard.
Twenty nine and a half compared from seven one?
From seven one, that's a radius. Twenty nine, they, they could provide a twenty nine and a half foot radius compared to the state standard forty eight. Now, I, I, if I had just finished my thought, that was it. All right, Mr. Work looked at, looked at the concept, and he provided an email response, which is on the township server, actually due over weekend, indicating, after looking over plans and the options for a turnaround in this area, I feel the choice of the hammerhead is the best solution for the project. I'm concerned that the smaller cul-de-sac could be problematic, the hammerhead is best suited for this design of service. All the public service vehicles, such as police, fire, EMS, public works vehicles, that the smaller cul-de-sac would. Frankly, my personal opinion, I share that opinion as well, uh, I did see in other, there was an email, I believe, that the applicants had obtained from the fire official that indicated that the fire official felt that he would be okay with either, but if he did the turnaround, he asked for a few minor things. My, my recommendation, based upon Sergeant Works' recommendation, is that if the board approves this project with a turnaround, that the hammerhead and not.
Okay, now, the biggest medical rooms truck could make it, with a hammerhead can get out.
A hammerhead, a hammerhead functions differently than a cul-de-sac, if you're familiar with the cul-de-sac, it's the purpose of the cul-de-sac is to be able to go in and do a circular turn. The problem with an undersized cul-de-sac, if you've got eighty feet, or eighty eight feet, or whatever the diameter is, even if you have cars parked there, someone still has room to navigate. You take that bolt and you shrink it, you can no longer make that move. A turnaround function is different, a turnaround is not meant for people to do this, a turnaround is meant for a large vehicle, if they have to, they can back up and go back out. It's, it, it functions differently than cul-de-sac.
They go up to head first, once they back up to head first.
If you have the room to put in the cul-de-sac hole per R S I S, or even close to R S I S, I don't think you have a problem. This is a very significant limitation, uh, and based upon Sergeant Works' recommendation, uh, I recommend the turnaround. The hammer, excuse me, thank you.
Uh, Terry, the working additions of the fire truck, needs to make, in a, is such a, would that be new?
It's not, it's not.
I understand, what's that? That's the only thing we're talking about, besides, the ambulance would, would be able to make the full turn in your.
You have public works as well.
Fire trucks.
Yeah.
How are they getting down there now?
I don't know, but you're adding, you're going to be adding to the people they have to serve.
They back out?
Yeah, so now, you're, you're going to put warehouses there, and I have.
Well, the question is, if they're backing out now, does the undersized cul-de-sac make it worse?
The undersized cul-de-sac, if people, people tend to park where there's places to park in the town, I'm trying to say, we have to pack as fast as I can, and I think Sergeant Works' concern. Sergeant Works' concern, as, as, as a local traffic expert, is if you put paving there, they will come, to coin a phrase. Which means that you're going to take, just, just let me finish, you're going to take a smaller cul-de-sac, and if people park, it now becomes this, and you can do nothing with it. That's the problem.
The more families you have moving there, more kids on there, more dangers is for our trucks to back out.
Then the town may not any longer be willing to submit for relief from R S I S, if their traffic safety department is disagreeing with that proposal. The town's the one who needs to request that relief.
Okay, so, I think Mr. Keshub, Terry, you finished, right?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No.
For the chair, can I ask the, to Terry one question?
Yes, sure.
I don't think I've ever seen a hammerhead turnaround in late, when I've been here twenty five years, do you know one?
I can't think of one off the top of my head.
People leave the town.
There's temporary, there's, there's temporary hammerheads all the time. What happens is, as the committee develops, you get small subdivisions for infill development, and a road terminates, they'll extend the road past the property, and then they'll put in a temporary turnaround to bump in until the next.
I think we're at the Canary School, and then, after home, then the road, we made a hammer.
I'm sure you're, R S I S actually allows them, either multi-family development, they're allowed to have a hammerhead in the right way.
Okay, that doesn't actually necessarily mean it works. I have one, there are developments, not developed, you can't.
They're, they're, they're not, they're not.
Yeah, but you can't, it's very difficult, a small car, maybe, a larger vehicle, very difficult. Okay, John.
So, I, I certainly appreciate the reconsideration, again, as, as your attorney had indicated, you know, at the time, we were on a Zoom application, I was trying to contact my client at the time to discuss the application specifically, um, some considerations, and things that the board was discussing. Unfortunately, I was able to contact, and during the process, the board went to a vote for denial, I had indicated, I have some information I do want the board to be aware of, I know there's a mystification, or Zoom, I don't know if you can hear me, uh, however, the board made a decision on the application, uh, without all the information available. One of the key pieces, as John had alluded to originally, was, we can develop this application fully conforming, without the need for any variances, we feel the application we're proposing is a better alternative than that, uh, that situation. And if we come in fully conforming, under the R S I S rule, we're not required by any kind of turnaround, obviously, a design that provides a turnaround certainly benefits the neighborhood, be it a reduced size cul-de-sac, or a hammerhead. Uh, I agree with Terry, I am of the same opinion, that a, a hammerhead works better, uh, than a cul-de-sac there, a cul-de-sac will tend to get congested by parking, and not really function the way it's supposed to. Uh, the, the hammerhead, and, and I agree, small hammerheads are very difficult, in this particular case, the hammerhead we're proposing, rather, uh, large aside, uh, it's twenty feet wide, whereas.
I hope the other people don't talk in the hammerhead.
So, we will strike it as a, as a fire lane for no parking, and that was the condition the fire company had.
Did you run the hammerhead? I mostly the hammerhead.
Uh, wait, it's on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Can you put a fire in?
Uh, so, the R S I S, uh.
What?
I'm with that.
I'm with that. Um, so, R S I S specifically, one of their clarifications states that the development proceeding June third nineteen ninety seven, the R S I S does not require developments built before the rules became operative, June third ninety seven, be approved to meet the sta, the standards. This is true, even when a proposed development relies on an existing development for its street network, sanitary sewer system, water supply system, or stormwater management system. So, based upon that, we're not required to put in a cul-de-sac, if we come in with a fully conforming application, we're not required to provide cul-de-sac or turnaround, but we're here asking you to let us put in a turnaround, uh, and put in a, a hammerhead. Uh, and by doing so, uh, you know, view the variances that we testified previously, uh, in that light, so the variances are very minor, uh, the two left duplex lots are nine thousand nine hundred square feet, instead of ten thousand. Uh, and we did that to shift the lot lines over ever so slightly, to make room for the hammerhead. And then the, uh, the last variance that's being requested is side yard setback, and that side yard setback is against the railroad. So, specifically in this location, here, we're asking for a seven foot setback, where that view this here is required to have fifteen feet. Again, being an angle, it doesn't act as a rear yard setback, it's against the railroad, it has no impact on adjacent neighbors, it more appropriately acts as a side yard, but technically, under your ordinance, that's a rear yard, it needed a variance. Those are the only two variances we're asking for, uh, we feel that they are appropriate, given the benefits of this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson, I just want to.
I didn't see you.
Stop that, buddy.
No, I just want to, for the record, if somebody comes with a totally conforming application, I know the fire marshal, whatever, said that it was a safe turnaround, if they come with a fully conforming application, the client would not require any of that, we have to. I would like to, I know that our neighbors here.
Yes. To put that simply, um, a plan where must follow the rules, and if the rules allow an approval, if you were to deny it, it would be, or say, or a charity, because it wouldn't be outside of the rules left, so it's, the short answer is, a by right application has to be approved.
So, technically, they could come with a by right application, and that's what you testified, and you're coming in with a better application to help the traffic on the road.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
That's exactly.
Okay, do any board members have any questions?
By right application now.
Um. We like what?
I like it better with, I like it better with hammerhead as opposed to the.
A by right application.
As opposed to by right.
Because you, we have safety.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, you know, I'm always advocating, I've been talking to traffic safety anyway about things, and I'm certainly not going to disagree with that, or that, or board engineer.
Okay, do any other board members have any questions?
Yeah. It's nice, but I'm just curious, it looks like you provided the by right ad with the proposed reduced size cul-de-sac, right? Do you have anything that would show what would that be, the normal size cul-de-sac?
We did not prepare that concept.
Did you, did you look at it at all?
Uh, no, we did not.
Okay, conceptually, if it was a full size cul-de-sac, what would, what would you lose? It doesn't look, I'm looking at it.
We, we'd lose two units.
You'd lose two units?
Yeah.
Looks to me like you could possibly lose the last unit. Let's see, you have six, you have, you have three side of size, right, so six total units, looks to me like you could lose the sixth out of the, out of the sixth, but you still have five.
Well, remember, we need to maintain front yard setback to that second unit, too.
Yeah, so I would be more inclined to give you a variance on front yard setback with a R S I S, you know, conforming turnaround. I don't see why you need to stick it to the sixth one, and.
Well, again, under the R S I S.
And frustrate, and frustrate the entire block.
We're not required to provide.
I understand you not, I understand you not, but, you know, it's nice, because that's the question that I asked Mr. Jackson.
Just a clarification, the, the hammerhead is R S I S.
Understood, I'm, I'm talking about the by right application on your side. I'm talking about, first, the by right application, I.
The fact that they could come back with a by right one, with six thousand, it's no turnaround.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sure you're aware that had they wanted the by right application, they would have presented the by right application, they're not, they presented this other one for the hammerhead.
And, and Mr. Isaacson, I'm not saying that it's by right.
Agreement, yes.
When they get scrutinized, sometimes they're not so, I, I, I'm, you know, that's the representation of by right for purposes of discussion, whether that must be approved.
Well, while watching, watching the video, I, I know that there's a lot of neighbors that are, you know, opposing, and I, I just feel like there's a compromise that can be made over here, without, uh, without, um, having to resort to a, a one-sided deal, that's all. And, and maybe you should go back with the neighbors and try to figure out if there's something that could be done where everyone's unhappy.
The, the, the majority of the jacket was not having a turnaround, we're providing a turnaround, we're not required.
You're providing a hammerhead. Which is not really a turnaround.
We're not.
Yeah, you know, I, the truth is, I, I would like to reserve further comment, I'd like everyone to begin with each other, I, I wanted to get through.
Do we have any other ones?
Okay, I'll roll through the bubble right now.
But, but Mr. Keshub, you had provided notice, correct?
We have a notice for this agreement, sir, you was Terry from.
Sir, please state your name.
Yakov Elzary, thirty one East St. Street.
Please spell your last name.
E L A Z A R Y.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, please proceed.
You're right, there's not so many people here tonight in the block, it's, it's a difficult night, and we thank the board for coming out and doing the service for everyone, I'm pleased. Originally, in twenty fourteen, we spoke about it at the beginning of the summer, and it said in papers, I don't know if it was put into the record, that the engineer department and the fire department at that point said that we should put in a cul-de-sac. Before, there was a project that was unfortunately passed. there was a project that was unfortunately passed in the middle. Reason why they said that is, the block is very congested. We've had fires on the block, little. Thank God, there was one fire in a dry event, and there was a, unfortunately, a county act. With some people, you know, board members, you know, the county that probably inside they saw, trucks couldn't get down there, and they had to pull farther away. And then just recently, with Mr. Greenwall's fire also, they had to come around to Bean Brothers. But besides the fires, there's safety issues, too. You have a dead end with around 50, 60, 70 families' lives, and there's constantly cars going down. On East Ninth, where the public works used to be, there's a nice cul-de-sac over there. People don't park there. People maybe park there a little bit. They do. But is a side street no parking? What? Is there a side street no parking? Obviously. I think so. On one side of the street, yeah.
Isn't that a full-size cul-de-sac?
That is a full-size cul-de-sac, yeah. And that's what really was designed for here in when ENR went in 1990. It was supposed to be a playground here on the corner, and not anymore townhouses many years ago. I mean, I have reports here from 2014. I'd like to give it out to the board members who've got one month to see if I made copies.
I think the problem may determine that in 2021, we'll be at this application. If there were room for an RSIS-compliant cul-de-sac, I think we'd all be looking for it. Unfortunately, per review of these documents and per designer's book from the Alvin's engineer, he has room based on the layout, which he's saying can be made by right for less than two-thirds of an RSIS state-designed cul-de-sac. It's been looked at by two of your professionals. Your traffic safety department has recommended against a cul-de-sac based on this concept. Mr. Isaacson has indicated he can live with either one, but like I said, that's... You have two big issues. You have a substantive deviation from state design, and to traffic safety, people are saying, we look at it, we do not recommend it. That gives me major cause for concern.
You know, Mr. Isaacson was saying, it's level six, we need a five.
Well, that's between the board and the applicant. If by some year, more land can be created for a cul-de-sac, then that could be revisited.
What I'm having difficulty understanding is, how is an undersized cul-de-sac worth? That's what I don't understand. I know you can tell me, it do work, it gets smaller. It won't get smaller than the regular width. We should take one minute.
We do.
You're just now, we're just gonna take...
You don't want to...
Terry, we're gonna take a minute.
Yeah, one thing is, why do they feel that the...
Hold on one minute. I'm sorry. Okay. We're back on the record, proceed. Yeah, Terry, I just understand why...
Let me take a step back.
Yeah. And the idea also, if you don't mind, why the byright is byright without any cul-de-sac at all?
Well, I think you heard the opinion expressed by the Alvin's engineer, I defer to John, as to his interpretation of the RSIS. Now, RSIS, going back, RSIS was created in 1990. It was not created for municipalities. It was created, the evidence was by builders. Purpose of the RSIS for all design studies was to come up with a set of uniform standards that the builders wanted to comply with. So when you see a standard made in RSIS, well, that's not an extravagant, oh, my gosh, you've got so much room above when you actually leave. That is what the builders propose as part of the RSIS legislation to be adopted for the design. So I can't explain it any better than when I tried to explain it earlier. You have, you would have a cul-de-sac, well, two-thirds the size of what the people who create the design document said would be. Now, if people park as they're prone to do, I can't comment as to what happens on 93 or what would happen out here 12 months from now, three years. I don't know. That's why I go to Sergeant Works. Sergeant Works guy, best institutional knowledge as to how traffic functions in this town. He is saying he has concern. He does not recommend the cul-de-sac here. For this size cul-de-sac, I am not comfortable based on what I know. If it was put in, could it work properly? Perhaps. There's a very significant chance of it not. I tell you, as your board engineer, based upon this design, based upon this layout, I recommend the, that of the hammerhead. Now, if the board wants to negotiate, or if the property owners want to negotiate and come up with a new concept, we can certainly look for that. Based upon this layout, the hammerhead is the better. Record is like that the witnesses have provided a November 12, 2014 letter from memory convert written address to the planning board, and that'll be made part of the record. That's the exhibit.
I have moved the file like you said. Thank you.
The difference...
Same way... Kelly, are you Mr. Morris in the context of this law?
That's me. You didn't tell me that.
I didn't.
The same way that in the hammerhead, that we can make sure people don't park by putting lines and stripes, same way in the cul-de-sac, we can make sure they don't, just putting lines and stripes.
May I ask something real quickly? This letter does not say cul-de-sac. This letter says turnaround. There is a difference. A turnaround could be a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead. This was not a...
And you think that turns you around?
Turns you around, too, right?
Okay, and Mr. Lozong?
Yeah. So I'm saying is that really, we could put stripes on that turn, the turnaround. And the reason why I think a turnaround is better is, you're not going to have a garbage truck going into that hammerhead.
We have it all the way.
Yeah, but what they do now is, they just turn around by the parking lot of the head start, and they back up in there. It's totally impossible to turn around in there. What we need this cul-de-sac for, this turnaround for, is the flow of traffic makes it better. The flow of the regular traffic of the small emergency vehicles, of the ambulances, of first aiders, that would be able, I think, in a more undersized cul-de-sac, if we can get that no one parks in that cul-de-sac.
I supply your opinion, sir. The head of traffic safety has a different...
Terry, I have one question for you. I don't think it bothers us against traffic and safety. Or we don't approve it? Or we approve it? We're not going against traffic and safety. My only question is, is it possible to make an undersized turnaround and plus in the corner make a hammerhead so the bigger trucks can turn around?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, accommodate a undersized cul-de-sac with a hammerhead?
No, make an undersized cul-de-sac and plus the one corner make a hammerhead.
Right, so you think undersized cul-de-sac with a hammerhead, like a protrusion?
You might just drive a release on it.
Like this, we could accommodate the neighbors to most vehicles and the big vehicles have a hammerhead. Okay, we don't have a form.
Ready to have the cul-de-sac plan up on screen just for your record?
All right, we're gonna take another one minute.
Mr. Schuh, the question I asked you, that same question. Is it possible to make an undersized cul-de-sac and on one corner have a protrusion to have a hammerhead? So we have the... We can satisfy the neighbors with undersized cul-de-sac satisfied to traffic.
The applicant is willing to do the undersized cul-de-sac. We provided a plan.
I understand. Traffic Safety does not agree with it. They would like a hammerhead.
The reason Traffic Safety doesn't agree with it is not because of the lack of pavement. It's an excess of pavement. Pavement invites people parking even with stripes on it. In a hammerhead, it's a limited area, and it's obvious it's the only way to turn around the end of the street. So people have a tendency not to park in a hammerhead. Compared to a cul-de-sac, they will park up against the end of the cul-de-sac.
They're gonna park wherever there's pavement, whether it's the shape of a hammerhead, a triangle, square, diagonal, or a parallel. Doesn't make any difference. They're going to park there's pavement.
Under... I understand that. I'm picking with the traffic safety, that was the basis.
No, I understand. I understand. The traffic and safety will probably take into consideration they do not want an undersized cul-de-sac and probably everything is to go outside of the lake. Now, knowing what we know about lake, which, again, I'll reiterate, everyone will want where there's pavement. I'm a victim and perpetrator of this open space park. It just happens. So I personally, it doesn't make any difference, a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac, people are going to park. The only way people are not going to park there is if the neighbors self-police and make sure that there'll be parks. Now, if they're already self-policing, and the neighbors are saying they would rather the undersized cul-de-sac, I personally will lean towards the undersized cul-de-sac. There's no way for them to be pleased. They're not going to apologize to have people being told from the cul-de-sac or from the hammerhead. So it's only come down to self-policing. And we have to look at who the police are in this situation. It's the neighbors. And if they're saying we would rather self-police as an undersized cul-de-sac, that's the direction I'm in. Okay? Again, unless you can get rid of the last duplex. When a regular RSIS conforming, oh, I think that would make everyone happy, but I don't know.
Joe, can a fire truck turn around on undersized cul-de-sac if nobody's parked?
If nobody's parked, there's the same amount of pavement and turning area.
So they can't?
Yes.
The biggest trouble...
I think it's a very bad idea to go against traffic.
I know, so I think it's a very bad idea.
We do all... No, no, no. I understand. I understand. I understand. I wish everybody could be happy, but we always ask for input of traffic and safety in our board engineer. We're starting saying that we're not listening to traffic and safety. We're not listening to our board engineer. It's gonna become a loud, loud voice, right? So I'm just telling you.
Good news.
I'm just... Have some sort of...
Do you agree? Do you agree that people are going to park there, whether it's a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac?
I agree that people park all over the place.
Okay.
Terry has a comment, too.
I have a recommendation on the township from your head of traffic safety recommending against an undersized cul-de-sac. God forbid something bad happens out here, whether it's the result of an undersized cul-de-sac or whatever. You have opened up the township to massive liability. It is problematic.
My personal opinion...
The entity.
Where's...
I think we dropped the liability a couple of years ago and put those townhouses on the side.
I'm commenting on the application from... We have an opinion from a township expert in writing, recommending against...
Mr. Chairman, are we open to any less liability if we put in a hammerhead and people park there? I mean, where's the... We all...
I understand with a hammerhead, you're doing according to recommendations of your traffic and safety.
Therefore, if people park, they're just gonna go and say, you shouldn't have put a hammerhead?
Or traffic and safety going for some. I don't want to go on circles.
Consciousness and liability are two different things. I've never heard of a planning board being held liable or township being liable.
Your conscience being held liable.
Conscience is different.
Okay, that's what we're talking about. Okay, I think we have...
Do you have any other fellow waiting to speak?
I don't... Do you want to just repeat the same things, basically? Okay, please come forward. We haven't allowed much which way to go, but we understand the neighbors very clearly. Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Harry Long.
Okay, and please, if to be affirmed?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before this court will be the truth, the whole truth, not虚假? Please spell your last name and then give your address.
That will be by SDR 45 by the state.
Okay. Please make a short statement.
Okay. Sure. I'm asking if the township could please help us protect our block and our children. There is a way, they can open the end, that it shouldn't be a dead end, and they can go by the railroad, get some property from there, take all the pieces of property from this property that Greenwall found, open the block, do something. Our children is a dead end. Right now, the place is so congested by putting houses across the street, we're now losing all the parking on the other side of the street, right? The place is gonna be... It's dangerous. We have a family that has a special needs child that moved off the block after we had a fire, so...
What do you recommend? That between a hammerhead and a cul-de-sac undersized, let's say the option is not a full-size cul-de-sac? Or you...
I'm asking the township to do whatever it takes to protect our children on block.
That's what traffic and safety said.
Right. If a hammerhead, you show me, I'm inviting everybody down to block, you show me how a fire engine can turn around there. There's no way. It can't get past the park. It can't get past it. When there were two fighters on blocks, it couldn't pull up where the fire would, and that's without the township, the townhouses being removed. So we have to make sure our town is safe before we sell property, build houses. The place has to be safe. Someone has to come down and see them unsafe. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public who would like to be heard? Sim, I will close at the public. Okay, I would like comments from board. We have an issue here. Basically, the neighbors would like a full-size cul-de-sac, and the applicant, that's the one that he can make a byright application.
Mr. Chairman, the way I see it, there's two options. There's the option is, again, what I'm leaning, my leaning is to deny the application or to tell them to remove duplex and put in an RSIS conforming cul-de-sac.
Okay. Then Bruce, you want to... Do you have an opinion?
What does the byright application look like? We could just do this...
Bruce is in front. It's in the... It's in the...
Well, why don't we put it over the screen?
I've had it up a couple times. It is up now. It doesn't show the design of the street. It's just a lot subdivision.
I think it's making each house a little smaller.
It's making the last two duplex, the two pairs are 9,900 square feet. We had 100 square feet. Move a line over a few inches on each of those lots to make it 10,000 so we're compliant, and we will comply with a 15-foot setback compared with this.
It makes the house smaller?
It would make your house a little smaller. It would make the end house a little smaller. And it would force us to push the end house closer to the street, and we'd have four parking stalls across, which wouldn't allow that one for...
And we do.
Since they don't need to request a variance of any kind from the board theoretically on this application, then they would not need to provide a turnaround, it would not require rights.
So that's why it's not shown on there, right?
Correct. John, what was Terry deference you on?
Well, I said about RSIS, whether that would require a turnaround, and I cannot answer that. I would not answer that in the abstract. I would not give an advisory opinion on whether RSIS. I defer the engineer from that. I don't have design growth for cul-de-sacs.
Again, we have to take it from RSIS.
I think, I think the question was, and correct if I'm wrong, Joe, you would say that the right existed prior to RSI.
Two thirds.
It was additional question.
Correct.
Based upon that, that's what I was asking. Okay, yeah, that I don't know. I can't give an answer. Right now, I have to research.
Okay, I think right now the question to the board is, my opinion, unless the board feels differently, that do we go, we let them, we approve this application based on traffic and safety with a hammerhead or keep the denial from before?
I would like to perform a motion to, Mr. Chairman, you move.
Last motion.
All right, I would move to, again, in the interest of not denying the application outright, I would move to put in a conforming RSIS turnaround and removing one lot.
When you say turnaround, is that a poll?
Yeah, and again, in terms of, correct or wrong, we should be able to work out, and I know there probably will be variances on the setbacks from the fifth lot, and I would be willing to work that out in resolution.
I'm not sure if we can just see or review on the layout. You could deny the application and tell them to come back with another one.
I would make, I would move to deny the application.
There's another choice, though. You could make a motion to table the application pending review of a, whatever you just asked for.
Yes. Okay, that would be my motion. To table this, pending a further review, removing the sixth lot and putting in an RSIS conforming cul-de-sac.
So you want to see five lots?
Five lots and a full, fully conforming turnaround.
Do we have a second? Necessary relief if the board needs to act.
Yes.
Do we have a second, then?
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Plankton.
Yes.
All right, so I want to make sure I have this in the resolution. We have it right up here.
Well, we won't have it.
Well, I want this to memorialize exactly what we're doing.
John, just for one second. I think the board is taking very serious all the neighbors over here. We're trying to work out, I understand the applicant is willing to build, because it's a dead-end street, we're trying very hard to make it the safest possible for all the neighbors. Let's see if we can come.
We reserve a right to make the application, or deploy conforming, so the board can not refer to that.
Again, I'm a hundred percent, you have the right. Hopefully, we can work something out, and we're not denying you, we're willing to listen to it again. Let's see if we can work something out and satisfy everybody.
All right, I think there's definitely, like I said, there's a resolution here that will make everyone equally unhappy.
All right, now, let me just make sure I cover a couple logistics on this. First of all, I want to make sure I have the verbiage correct, which we'll get to in a minute, so you don't confusion. And also, the applicant will need to consent to additional time for the board to act on this application. I mean, they're already active, it's done out. You're snatching victory from the jaws of defeat, so.
So I have no, we wait time to investigate.
John, there's no application that was denied. They want to hear a reconsideration.
The board has granted reconsideration, but before you reach your final determination, erase the first one. The applicant shall produce plans, five lots and an RSIS-compliant turnaround cul-de-sac and identify necessary gradually, pending the board's review prior to making this final decision.
Is this a resolution? We're just being carried.
We're being carried, but this is complicated. I don't want this to be in writing, so we know what the motion was. This was a motion of the second, and these are your directions.
Okay, understood.
So it's not a denial, none of them.
The matter's still pending.
If we want to go back, we can come back with five lots, or we make the application.
Or not, or we make a total conforming.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I don't remember the nice lady's name, but is there any possibility of, just looking at Google Maps, of cutting down some trees along the railroad and making?
Bruce, it's not, it belongs to.
I'm asking questions.
Yeah, it belongs to railroad.
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 Oh, so you're trying to get an easement from them. They're not going to allow anything on their property.
Ever.
Ever.
Right, it's very different.
They're not wanting to.
Even Brian and Reese, right, Brian?
Root nine.
Okay, you have a two.
Root nine and white and red.
We have a two in the race, yes.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, we're also looking a little bit at a no man's land here, or no woman's land, as it were, in that we have a resolution, we have a case that was denied, there's an application for reconsideration. So what we have now is the reconsideration is pending, and for some reason they never come back, we have to close the loop on this and adopt our denial. So what I would recommend is that we have a second component to this that says the applicant shall have the number of days before things is appropriate to come back, otherwise it will be denied.
It would be scheduled.
Wait, wait, next time, nine days.
It's really depend on your schedule, plus more than us.
Our schedules are scheduled through, so it would have to be late November, and Terry will need time to review fully whatever redesign you're proposing.
Yeah, so I think we could have it submitted in time, whatever, whether it be November, that's the next hearing, that's the next supplemental hearing.
November 19th would be the next.
So how about if, you know, we give a date to submit by October 15th, because the only reason we might not do this.
That's definitely not the case. November 9th, it's probably 23rd.
Probably 9th.
Or the 9th.
9th is a good. I think, I think the first one is the first one.
I've always been tending around these things, trust me. I only have a day here.
November 23rd, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so what is the date that has to be submitted?
November 23rd hearing, so I would say submit by October 29th.
You'll have some things. It will respond. All right, now, here we're off the record, but this is between you and I, we had this discussion. You're going to have to consider if you have this new plan, that's what you want to go with. I don't know if you're showing up and saying this is not a better alternative, or if you're saying this will work, yes, we'll go with this. If your intention is to go with the new plan, I think you should notice for that.
I don't disagree, but I'll speak my part. I hope you see your coming in.
You just want to show that. You don't have to notice.
Yeah.
Check that out.
Yeah, thank you.
Alex sent this to you to memorialize.
I don't know what that means. We only have a memorialized.
Right. And I got what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant like for memorial. I didn't know.
Right. The document that this motion was made in the segment, this is.
Memorializing document are the same words. Here are the.
I hear you.
Got it. A motion to.
Unfortunately, last week, that long email we sent, that cool email, unfortunately, we couldn't. It's on Sunday. I'm interested in one of those. You post one, send it away, I've got several words, and it's in on the back. There's one upstairs, a number, and you upstairs have that.
I'm just putting the band, but that's on my right now. Thank you.
Another house.
When I went to the courthouse, I was a real patient, I was with you at the time, I was in the right somewhere, looking for courtroom one.
It's a matter of, the roads that are funded, they're not, the money gets up there, or worse case, they were eliminated, definitely getting a little worked out. Everybody's got one next year. When you swap that road, first of all, how long does it take to, the whole road, two weeks, and then one, two years? They're looking for those, for it to work. Self-congratulation.
Down, down, something crazy like a pot, or you need to add, or you need to go to the end. So how do you swap that out?
Actually, John, I'll tell you a phone number. He is the one.
Unless, unless. Those are those. If it's, 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 It, it allows one duplex unit on, uh, Ocean Avenue where there were two. Uh, and it allows a single family lot that if something happens.
So your testimony, it's a safer application and a better application.
And, and, and just to go too quickly, I agree with all the variances that Terry indicated. Uh.
You put it on the.
If you look for the, the, uh, that plan two thousand and seventeen division segment, that's the progress development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. My testimony that does that. The municipal manager law, uh, N A C forty twelve fifty five D two hundred purposes of the act is to encourage the displacement to guide the appropriate development of all ends of the state. It's my testimony that this process. And these are C two variances with the benefits greatly outweighed in that.
Okay, thank you. The board have any questions?
Just, that's the chairman of my name because, uh. My esteemed colleagues diligently taking down. So you're not seeking to leave under C one. It's under C two.
Correct.
For the reasons that you stated, you don't see that. You said that benefits that way they had, but if I don't, you don't see it.
And my, my opinion is a subdismant, it's a benefit. We have less.
Okay, I just want. Sorry.
At least get. There's no C two.
Okay.
Well, the relief that's requested is. All people agree.
Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application?
He is stacked.
I'm.
It's always stacked.
Just reaffirm that's what I did before this board with the truth of all truth and not.
I refer Moshe Zines, eleven sixty three Evergreen Avenue. One minute. Just one.
One minute.
Yes.
Okay, no, no, okay.
When this application was left first and on January fifth, back on Zoom, I sent them an email and the board approved my comments. I just wanted to, um.
Make sure that it's.
Right. So I'm going to reaffirm them real quickly with five items, which were one retro. I like to email this if you want. Retro reflect the street name signs on Cherry Street. And the. Um, not like the guy who put in the street name sign on that with drivers. Need like something that people can see. Um. Huh?
Okay, that's.
So they know where they live. And that the street name signs should be installed on top of the stop signs to ensure they do not get blocked by other traffic control signs like the way the state does it on Route ninety. Those people like them. Two crosswalks along Cherry Street. I really hate, I'm not sure. See it on that sign. So I want it there. Uh, number three.
Isn't that a? Doesn't say that to them?
That would be a question for Terry. We're on State Highway.
It's not on the Cherry, not on Cross. Okay, on Cherry Street, yeah, cross Cherry.
And I don't know if the State Highway controls that when it's added in or is it State Highway?
No, so if it's, if it's the, the answer I got from DOT is that it's a unsignalized intersection, then it's on township, uh, uh, decision. And number three, stop, stop bars. So you have the stop sign, you have the stop bar, um, as well as a double yellow solid line painted fifty feet from the stop bar. So you have the stop sign, um, you have the stop bar, the white line, and you have the double yellow fifty feet from the stop bars. And, uh, number four is, um.
On the pass up years, actually.
Yeah. A yellow paint on the curves. Uh, so yellow paint on the curves fifty feet from, thank you. I know, I, I'm, I'm with Public Works all day to try and get them around and they mess up each one that they do. So we need the developers to do it right. Uh, so yellow paint on the curves fifty feet from the stop sign and twenty five feet from the crosswalks. Okay, Sheraton people that call me every day to get this done. So we gotta get these and all these developments. That means.
Ryan, you agree with that, what you said?
My comments are the same as they were last time that the intent that the town does it during resolution compliance.
And so, so number four, real, real quick, yeah, a little bit is yellow paint on the curves fifty feet from the stop sign and twenty five feet from the crosswalks. As well as no parking signs of all these areas, right? And number five is the, the bright sticks, which you may recall, I sent a picture of that. That's the stick on the stop signs that you can actually see the stop sign at night. Okay? Those are my five comments, just to reaffirm what we did. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to be heard? Signalize a promotion as an application.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to. I have, I want to make sure that we have the conditions.
Of course we.
I know it'll take a minute, but it saves a lot of headache in the long term. Um, Alex, you just scroll down. These are the conditions from Mr. Zines. Reflect the street sign on Cherry. Uh, and sure, the street signs would be installed on top of the stop signs. Uh, crosswalk on Cherry Street, stop bars, W O sidelines, fifty feet back, yellow paint on the curves, fifty feet from the stop sign, twenty five feet from the crosswalks. And no parking signs along those areas. We also have numerous other conditions which you picked up, uh, from the review letter. Can you scroll up?
You agreed to say everything until you.
I, I agreed to say this last time, but we'll request to the town, we can't put parking signs unless the town. No. No parking sign, correct. And to the extent that the town goes along with the third resolution.
Okay.
These, these are our other conditions to approve how we took from the review letter. Outdoors signs, outdoors control lines must be corrected on surveys, soil investigation must be provided. Uh, technical, uh, warning service, concrete, acres, water needs, aviation draft. Across street access units shall be completed. Section not proposed for the amended subdivision. Private trash recycling is to be provided, that was discussed.
We have that, so that still comply. That's our. And that's. And why are you going to incorporate the flyer letter on the.
My preference as you've done. Yeah, we'll do that. But there's some questions on here. Um, and that was a question that, that there really is no doubt.
So you said that it will comply. You just.
Well, it's a question in the review letters or something about that. So then he, if, if there was a question about addicts or bases or outside access, I have a question.
And, and the answer on that is that we're going to comply with the orders.
So is, is the board comfortable with having addicts and.
As long as they comply.
And outside.
We're going to comply, same as every other house complete.
Okay.
So, so number eight, number nine, I'm going to take out, what about private trash?
Okay. Oh, D C W, correct.
D C W.
Where did this go?
Division will be.
So private trash will not be provided.
And seven, I think is.
That's our proposal.
Yes.
That's, well, yes, that's.
Okay, Mr. Stern, do you have a comment?
Site dry ablaisements will be provided.
Yes.
Architectural plans will be provided for the duplexes.
Yes.
Site rating should be designed with.
Yes.
Existing curb elevation, soil investigations, formal management shall be submitted.
Yes.
First four. Okay, so far I'm time and praise, you guys see.
Okay, Mr. Stern, what's your comment?
Mr. Mr. Flanery, so. On the lots, one sixteen oh two and one sixteen oh three, oh three. They're double stacked and they back out into Ocean Avenue.
Now, they, they don't back out into Ocean Avenue, they turn around the area.
And. No, oh, right, it's, it's a little hammer.
Yeah.
Is that?
That's just.
Enough room? I'm just wondering, could you scoop those two back?
But they, they are so good back and it complies with. That would be part of resolution compliance. If Terry thinks they need to go back further.
So Terry.
Yes, sir.
So when we have resolution compliance, where all problems are solved. Um. Is, is that enough room? You got to back car one out. Okay, he's got to come back, I guess car two's got to come out as well. And then try to go out nose first, we can be a little bit safer back into Route eighty eight. Is that enough room?
Is it going to be enough room for all cars, all drivers, all scenarios? I, I, I can't guarantee that. This is typically what is done, uh, for development such as this, which back on the busy roads, including county roads and, and highways. Um.
Okay, we had it, we had it developed on Joe Parker Road and we did something different to give it more room.
You probably had larger lots if I had to guess.
But if we moved that house back and made the backyard a little bit smaller.
That, I, that, that certainly lost.
Route eighty eight in the morning and night is kind of a nightmare. So if we have a little bit of room to actually orient the cars so they could.
Would the applicant be willing to.
During, during resolution compliance, we'll see what the turning movements are. If we need more, we can, we need more, but that, that is exactly what was approved. Right, we have, only we have two of them.
It's a relatively common. Kind of layout where it's. I do. Is it going to work a hundred percent of time or a hundred percent of your driver's side? I can't say.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what else for motion this application?
All conditions that are on screen.
Okay. We have a second. Mr. Meyer's sentence, roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mr. Flanery.
He said we all convene you with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Flanery.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Eisen.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um.
The minor sub, keep going.
Keep going, keep going.
Uh, I'm going, I believe it, so.
He has a hard start there.
Yes.
Should start it?
It's on my.
Okay. Um.
Yes.
Okay, go.
SC twenty four eighty five by Osho Whitestein is mine, it's up to create three lots for two on Royal.
Okay, Terry, we're going to go through report.
Good evening, Chairman. I'm reading from our uplog as I preview. Uh, story on here is my mutual submission waivers. Uh, problem is great. This is requested for location of existing and proposed wells and septic system. Um, we recommend that working forward that septic systems, uh, will be required as conditions of any approval unless public sewers bail.
Can you have a motion go along with the grand delivery? Move, move to second on the favor, aye.
All right. All right. Under zoning relief, we have little lots with varies for lot seventeen point oh two. Uh, minimum lot with varies for seventeen point oh three. Minimum side or setback varies for new lot seventeen point oh one. Uh, accessory side or setback varies for the shed to remain on new lot seventeen point oh one. Accessory rear setback, um, for, uh, what appears to be, uh, a wood deck on lot seventeen point oh one. Uh, Austin Park here leave has also been requested for existing lot seventeen point oh one. That's their relief. And again, uh, under design measures, the design measure would be necessary for sidelines, which are not. They will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Marian Weinstein, on behalf of my esteemed cousin, you're Osho Weinstein. Um, this is a minor subdivision application to create three lots from two. All three lots will be over twelve thousand square feet in the art wall zone. With that, I'm going to ask that Brian Sworn again. Tom.
Be sure to confirm that's what I did before this board with the truth of all truth and not.
I do, Brian Flanery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have, uh, three exhibits. Eighty one shows the, uh, existing two lots and the proposed three lots. Uh, eighty two is sheet fourteen of the back half showing where the property is. And three is an area of photograph of it. Uh, in the art wall zone, we're doing two lots that are almost fifteen thousand square feet. One lot that's only fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, we need a lot width variances, uh, for the lots and a couple of setbacks for.
What's the smallest spot, Mike?
The smallest lot is thirteen thousand seven hundred.
No, the width, the width.
Oh, the width seventy five point oh two feet.
And what do you mean?
Ninety, seventy.
Okay.
What is it?
Uh, eighty three point eight four on the third one for lots.
Okay.
Uh, we're also asking for minimum side door setback to the deck for the existing home. Uh, and accessory, uh, setback, uh, for the shed for the existing home, uh, and accessory rear setback. Uh, additionally, the existing home has two parking spaces. It's been there since I, I moved into Lakewood in nineteen seventy nine with two parking spaces and.
Time out, Brian, sir.
And the wood deck all the way in the back.
This is. Is there a pool in the back yard?
That, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the deck, the wood deck and the shed are existing.
Yes.
How did the wood deck get put in on the lot?
It's been there a long time. Uh, it previously, before, I think it was like two thousand and sixteen, you were allowed to put decks right up to the property line. In two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and seventeen. Uh, somebody changed the ordinance.
Okay, so it was done, it was done, uh, at.
Yeah.
Time for form.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, did you, did you got there to ask the neighbor?
The, the applicant's here, he's, he's the property owner.
I'm not saying, once you're coming for subdivision. You, you expect, you expect the variance, right? I'm just curious if they got the neighbors input.
I mean, uh, he noticed. Uh, he can't, he can't. He, he noticed, doesn't he?
No, he knows, just.
Okay. Brian, does anything to report?
No, sorry, yeah. Uh, no, we, we can address all that. The justification of the variance in that plan two thousand and seventeen, background information, the statement. Yes, the municipal manager law, the S A one fifty five D two and the purpose of the act. And enhances the general welfare, there's C two variances, benefits out with detriment. My testimony is there is no detriment to the benefits, or we give, we give free, uh, nice house.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to be heard on this application?
Mr. Chairman, can I just, observation I'd like to give to support attorneys, since, uh, Mr. Flanery often engages in legal argument. I want to talk about engineering and planning here. All along. All kidding aside, what we're, what we're doing is we're, we're, you're, you're creating variance circumstances and making, uh, you know, non. Nonconform. Nonconforming lots with a weird geometry to keep a house. Nothing says they have to keep that house there. I mean, maybe the configuration and symmetry of lots would be better if they had to get rid of that house. And then you say, no, we're not going to grant the variance. You just throw that out there. and just throw that out there. It's a great idea.
I think, I think the variances are fairly minor, and we have granted them in the class.
It clearly was.
Minor.
Sorry, one more time.
Okay, the variances. Okay, and, uh, and they're all over twelve thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Right, they're, they're nice, nice.
Required by the R twelve.
Okay.
So, Mr. Flannery has a matter with his legal argument.
Okay.
This is Flannery here, Brian's getting seven hours. And the sun is always shining, right, shining in the world.
Is it one subject generally on not less than fifty thousand square feet?
No, there's a well on subject in, uh, on last fifteen.
R seven five also. And that, that's subject to the Health Department, make sure that works.
Yes, there's an outside agency approval, and, and we're very not.
Okay, I'll close the republic and ask for motion on this application. Just all, John's.
For our, there's, Alex, do we have any conditions? We had a whole bunch of them from the review letter.
Okay, just to quote the review letter, that'd be so. There's no other condition. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, round call.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, on to the correspondence.
SC twenty-three oh-three by Cornstone, I believe, they're proposing modifications or flash exposure, which, on a second, the technicality requires, we've.
Okay, Ms. Swanson, is that you? Tammy, do you have anything that comes to the correspondence? Okay. Okay, you have to be affirmed. Mr. Jackson, could you affirm?
Mr. Engineer. Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth of all truth? I do, eh, uh, uh, for the Jersey. Basically, the current plan has proved that the basement area won't ground the trash. It's not, it's not good with, with atmosphere, it's, it's, it's serving the possible, and that's why we want to go with dimensional things, which is done by all buildings, we feel is just, it, it, it just makes sense.
Yeah, do, are you gonna look at the slides and to have privacy and all that?
Yeah, for sure, for sure, probably, we do, right by the fence or six foot.
Something to have the pressure.
Yeah, no, nothing like it, they're just, basement area is just.
Okay, any one has any question for that? So, we have a motion to approve. Move.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, who has the next correspondence?
That one is SC fifteen four by Somerset, it's proposed modification to a deed restriction regarding driveway.
I don't, I don't see anything.
Terry, do you have any comments?
Copy the letter, bottom, at the bottom of the letter stack, would they number it in?
Okay, you brought, well, Mr. Swanson.
Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marion Weinstein, I may have the Somerset developments. Um, do you have a copy of the resolution? That I have. Um, the resolution for this matter, which, by the way, was cast fourteen years ago in two thousand and seven, uh, required the applicant to provide a deed restriction that would have prohibited access from the driveways to either Kennedy Boulevard or East County Line Road. Uh, these lots were sold by Somerset to individual homeowners. The homeowners went out, they applied for building permits, uh, some of those lots actually had driveways that front onto East County Line Road or Kennedy Boulevard, and they were not only did they get building permits, they got certificates of occupancy. Uh, Somerset went, sold the lots, were done, came and tried to get their bond released, and were told, uh, you can't get your bond released because there's a condition in the resolution that required a deed restriction.
Ms. Swanson, Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
There's anything changing from what's currently?
Absolutely nothing.